This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:37 PM Tuesday, April 7th, 2020 in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson? Here. Mr. Barlow? Mr. Barlow needs to unmute.
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Schussner?
Here.
Chair Seelinger?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
Thank you. 2.01, Approval of the Agenda. Mr. Munoz.
There are no changes to the agenda.
Jean Marvin, move approval.
Kathy Nathan, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have to roll call for this as well? Okay. We're going to roll call to approve the agenda.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schussner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. 3.01, School Board Committee Assignments Update. I will begin, and then if anyone has anything else, you can get my attention next. I did attend the government forums meeting yesterday morning. This is a meeting of Chamber of Commerce, City Council, County Commission, Higher Ed, DMC, Mayo, quite a few folks. Some of the pertinent information, the mayor talked about her committees on helping our homelessness, our homeless population during this time, food access, and economic stability. The county met today. They are starting to talk about potential property tax relief, which may come from the county or from the state. And so, we need to be aware of that in case that has any impact on us at the school district. And also Carla Nelson spoke about some of the uncertain things that we have in terms of relicensing our teachers, the no testing, and then broadband for students across the state. So those were just a few highlights from that meeting. Has anyone else attended a meeting or have any other announcements?
Hi, Jean Marvin. This wasn't a meeting, but a number of us were over at John Marshall a couple of weeks ago to help with the... they didn't really need our help, but when the district is providing breakfast and lunches for our kids at 21 different sites with buses going everywhere and an amazing coordinated effort. And I keep going back. Again, they don't need my help, but it's just, it's so inspiring to see how amazing it is that we can feed that many kids and that we have a staff that shows up and they're positive and they're amazing. And I think frankly, it's good for our kids and their families to keep seeing those school buses. 21 different sites. It's stunning. That wasn't a committee assignment. It's just something that we wanted to do. So, that's all.
Thank you for sharing, Jean. Anyone else have something to share? Hearing none, I will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Julie, so moved.
Thank you.
It has been moved and seconded. We'll have Ms. Edgar now take the roll call to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
It has been moved and seconded. We'll have Ms. Edgar now take the roll call to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan? Aye.
It has been moved and seconded. We'll have Ms. Edgar now take the roll call to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan? Aye.
Mr. Schussner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, we do have two retirements. First one is Bonita Osen, elementary paraprofessional at Sunset Terrace. Her retirement is effective the end of the day, August 28th, 2020, and she's been with the district 29 years. And then, the second one is Mayo Jobstein, Student Nutrition Services Associate at Sunset Terrace Elementary, retirement effective at the end of the day, March 31st, 2020, been with the district 16 years. We thank both of those individuals for their service to our district.
Thank you, Superintendent. 5.01, Resolution Responding to Letter of Non-Concurrents and Recommendations of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I'm going to put up on the screen the letter that we will... that has our response. And I'm not going to... should be on your screen at this time. Not going to read all of it, but just kind of highlight our responses. The first recommendation they had was in the area of recruitment of American Indian staff. And the district's response is, "District will continue to be committed to recruiting and retaining a qualified workforce that reflects the district's diverse student population. To that end, the district continues to actively recruit teacher applicants who are American Indian. The district posts all vacant positions on the American Indian List serve, which is hosted by the University of Minnesota. The district has also asked the group to share job postings with their connections in the community, at colleges, and universities. The district gives significant consideration to any and all American Indian applicants and strives to retain all American Indian staff. Additionally, the district's Human Resources Department will collaborate with the American Indian liaison to further pursue activities and strategies to strengthen the recruitment and retention of American Indian staff. District administration will continue to dialogue and work with the American Indian liaison and the parent advisory group and all stakeholders utilizing American Indian resources in Rochester and the metro area and working with the Coordinator of Equity to strengthen the network of American Indian staff at RPS." The second recommendation they had covered the area of collaboration, communication, and professional development. The district's response, "In the past, the district has invited the AIPAC members to consult, to assist with planning, and to participate in professional development of the district's educators. The district will continue to invite members and tribe elders to participate in professional development days with district staff. To further provide professional development regarding indigenous narratives in classrooms and resources in support of teachers, the American Indian liaison will be included in the planning process of professional development days and will work with the committee to suggest speakers and presenters within the scope of the current professional development themes. The liaison will further work with the group to inform American Indian families and community members about upcoming professional development opportunities so they can participate in the conversations." And then, the third and final recommendation they had was in the area of student learning, standards, curriculum, and instruction. The district's response is, "The American Indian liaison has initiated action to review the district's current K-5 curriculum. Specifically, AIPAC members were instrumental in the planning and rollout of the Thanksgiving curriculum revision that occurred this, in the fall of 2019. The district staff members who are responsible for curriculum and instruction will continue to work directly with that group once the review is complete and there are materials to present. Additionally, the American Indian liaison will collaborate with the current curriculum and instruction team to recruit diverse staff to partner with this project and will meet with the AIPAC group and elders in the Rochester community to strengthen additional American Indian curriculum and indigenous narratives. By utilizing the consulting model in this area, the liaison and the AIPAC and the district should receive insight and guidance from multiple Native perspectives. As stated in the attached resolution, the school board values relationship with the AIPAC and thanks the members of the group for their collaborative input and their work on behalf of the district's American Indian students and all RPS students. The district looks forward to partnering with the group to implement the initiative described in this letter."
Questions, board members.
I can't send a chat thing out. This is Jean Marvin, but I have a comment.
Jean, do you have a question?
Oh, I do. I do. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. It's not a question exactly. It's just, I think that the letter is...
Ms. Workman, do you have a question?
Yes, is this...
Please unmute.
Is this similar to letters from past years? It seems like it is.
Please unmute, Ms. Workman.
I am.
Ms. Workman, did you have a question?
Just a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
This seems to me to be similar to letters that we've had in past years, but I'm seeing a lot more collaboration, and I'm really pleased to see that.
Thank you. Ms. Marvin?
Thank you. We discussed before briefly that it might be a good idea in collaboration with the AIPAC group, if they would be willing to come and present at least once or twice a year in terms of what they're doing, how they're working. Although, we have all kinds of communication with them. It's this letter of concurrence or non-concurrence is the one time a year when it's a public kind of situation. And I think that it seems to me that the working relationship is so good, the work that they're doing is so important, and the district's willingness to be partnering with that work is so important, that if we had opportunities other than just this one for the board and this group to meet together at a board meeting, that could be a really positive thing going forward.
Thank you, Director Marvin. Board members, any other questions?
This is Director Barlow. And much like Director Workman, I really appreciate the collaborative tone, which I think is so important, not suggesting it hasn't been there in the past, but it really seemingly came through clearly this time. Maybe I've been cooped up inside too long, but no, it was really good. I felt good about it. I'm sure all involved well, and I think that's such a wonderful tone for future ongoing, as Director Marvin suggested, ongoing collaborations with the liaison and the AIPAC community.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Superintendent?
Yes, I just would like to remind the board that we do... we have a 60-day window to approve the resolution. So if we don't do that tonight, we need to do it at the next board meeting.
Move to act. This is Jean Marvin, move to action.
Second, Julie Workman.
It has been moved and seconded to move this to action. We will now take a...
Can we have discussion about that first?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a conversation with a member of the committee who indicated that, I think because of the changes to our meeting schedule, that they were a little rushed in putting in the letter, and I could have gotten the reasoning wrong, but I was... but I'm under the impression that perhaps not all of the committee members were able to put their input in before the letter was due, and for that reason, I would feel more comfortable waiting to approve it, if only to allow for additional input.
Any other comments about moving this to action?
Just, just one. When I was at the last meeting, I think that they had, when they were talking about this letter, they said they had gotten an extension of the timeframe that it had to be submitted because they had had trouble getting people together, but they were working, it had already gotten the extension, and so that's why it was submitted in March rather than last month.
So, just to clarify, Director Marvin, you feel that the... that they had... they got an extension so that the whole committee could see more of the letter?
So that they could get the letter done and have the input that they needed. Now, I don't have a problem, you know, not moving this to action, but it seems to me that the letter that they submitted was the one that they wanted submitted.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on moving this to action?
Director Barlow here, and I would simply offer, there's really nothing in question or dispute. Everything the committee has identified as a concern, we have responded to and are in essence and agreement with. So I definitely am in support of moving this to action.
Thank you. Director Nathan?
And the vote that we're approving is our response to their letter, correct?
Correct. They need a response within 60 days after submitting the letter.
So if we were to delay the vote, it would only provide the public the opportunity to respond to our letter, not to change the letter that came from the committee?
I believe that is correct. I don't think at this... once they've submitted the letter, I don't think that it... any changes come forward after that. Otherwise, I believe it would have to be... they would have to go back to MDE and say, "We want a extension," or "We write our letter," and then back to the board. I believe that would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
Director Workman?
My question is, will there be any changes potentially in our response? I mean, this letter that Mike just put up on the screen, nothing's going to change in that, correct?
I do not believe that there would be any significant changes to our response, but I will let Superintendent answer that.
Yes, that is correct. The way it works, they submit their letter to us at a board meeting, and then we have 60 days from that time to respond to the recommendations. And you're correct, nothing will change to our response unless the board feels they're not happy with the response, and then we would make adjustments there. But if you're fine with how it's been responded, then nothing's going to change between now and our next board meeting.
Thank you, Superintendent. Anything other comments about moving this to action?
Jean Marvin, I just have one other one. This letter is an official sort of legal document, but it is absolutely not all that there is in terms of our relationship and our collaboration. So I think that we have a really strong working relationship, and if something new comes up, I think that we are agile enough to be able to work with that, too. I think it's an excellent response. It was an excellent letter that they wrote, but I think that our... the way we work together is going to continue to evolve. So even if this isn't a perfect letter or response, I think it's a really good... really good for now.
Thank you, Director Marvin. Any other comments?
Ms. Amundson?
Nay.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schussner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
It is now in action. I believe I'm having a little trouble with my audio, and I'm reverberating, so apologies. Thank you. And now therefore be it resolved that the school board, as follows. One, the school board hereby approves the attached letter responding to the AIPAC's recommendations. Two, the school board chair is directed and authorized to sign the attached letter on behalf of the school board. The chair may elect to sign electronically in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. Three, the district superintendent or a designee is directed to provide a copy of this resolution and the attached letter to AIPAC to implement this resolution and the attached letter, and to take any other appropriate action to ensure that the district is in compliance with the procedural requirements of Minnesota Statute, Section 124D.78.
Your approval.
Second, Julie.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we will now take a roll call vote on approval, and I will mute myself.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin? Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Schussner?
Aye.
Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
6.01, Approval of the Updated 2019 to 2020 School Resource Officer Service Agreement. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Facilities, and he will brief us on this agenda item.
Good evening, board members. I'm here to brief you on the updated School Resource Services Agreement. As you know, the school resource program has been in existence for over about 27 years, and there's currently five SROs, as we call them, that are currently under contract with us. One is at John Marshall, one is at Mayo, one at Century, one splits time between Phoenix and Rochester Alternative Learning Center, and the fifth SRO that we brought onboard last year is assigned between John Adams and Willow Creek. And Kellogg is covered by the Century SRO. In February, at the direction of the superintendent, we met with the police department to discuss or negotiate adding a sixth SRO, one that would be assigned to the middle school programs to supplement the fifth SRO that we hired last year. And those two SROs would then split time between the three middle schools. We're looking to implement this in the fall of 2020, but due to everything that's going on, you know, we're not 100% confident it's going to happen with the staffing levels that the police department has, but the intent is to move forward, at least get the contract approved. And if we need to adjust the contract at another time, we can do that. There's some changes made to the last contract that you approved in October of 2019, and it just cites that there would be now a sixth SRO added, and the adjustments to those assignments of the six. And then, there were some pay changes, some base pay changes, particularly related to the base pay cost adjustment that would begin September 1st, 2020, if the resource officer, that sixth resource officer start with us on September 1st, then we would pay a lump sum amount of $33,378.84 to pay for that increased service. And we also negotiated a cost of living adjustment as well into the contract to stay in line with what the current police contract is. The funding for the... this program is run through the Safe Schools Funds. We did get a one-time supplement to that fund, and we have enough dollars in there to support this for the next few years, adding the sixth SRO. And we anticipate that the Safe School money might eventually be renewed again anyway in the future. If this contract is... the updated contract's approved, then we still need to send it to the police department, who would then present it to the city council for their approval. And from there, then, it would be implemented based on the staffing levels of the police department, hopefully in September, at the start of school in the fall.
I would just add that just... Scott did mention this, that it does not have an impact on the general fund budget. We do have, as he said, we have a special Safe Schools funding that we have not used, but we believe that that funding will allow us to fund this position for the next two to three years.
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. Thank you, Superintendent. I understand we have... we'll have some questions on this item. Director Barlow, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you. Scott, just a couple of questions. As I read through this as a briefing item, I did notice that in part, the meeting on the 27th of February was to, well, to discuss delivering more consistent services. I think that's one of the verbiage that was there. And so, were there areas where there were inconsistencies, if you will, or needs which weren't being met? And there's another question I have, but I don't know if you want to answer this first or have me move immediately to the second question. The chair is indicating, nodding your head, yes, so I'm going to move on to the second question, and then you can respond to both. And the second one actually deals with the funding. I just heard Superintendent, you both reference or allude to the Safe School Funds. And as I looked at the School Resource Officer Service Agreement, I also noted that there's a statute that's referenced, Minnesota Statute, Section 126C.44, that does authorize the district to levy for costs associated with paying wages, benefits. And so, is it my understanding that that has not yet occurred, and through the Safe School Funds, which we have received, that's where the funding actually falls? we have received, that's where the funding actually falls? And then lastly, again, relative to funding, are we kind of maybe setting ourselves up, and this may be a question for John, when there are other, and this may be the only union outside the RPS, where there are negotiated contracts external, the, the realm of Rochester Public Schools, where we are tasked with funding, supporting whatever their unions negotiate, you know, 2.5 this year, 2 point after each year, and other unions, maybe you're thinking, hey, that sounds pretty good. And so, any discussions, any thoughts? And that completes my concerns.
Thank you, Director Barlow. I, I tried to make notes as you were asking. On the first question regarding the consistency, the concern that we have there is, we, when we added that fifth SRO to work the middle schools, he was assigned to do John Adams and Willow Creek. And the school resource officer at Century still supplemented Kellogg and handled Kellogg, and was pulled from her duties up at Century to go and supplement at Kellogg. And so part of the reason for adding the sixth is to allow that school resource officer at Century to apply her, her position full-time at Century, and then take that new SRO and split the middle schools, the three middle schools into the two SROs, which would, we think would provide much more support to the middle schools, having two full-timers consistently assigned to those middle schools. And that was the impetus behind that addition. Now, regarding the funding and the statute that you mentioned, you're correct about the levy, but I could let John answer that question since he has the majority of, all the knowledge on the funding piece. And if he's willing to, to talk about the negotiated contract, the cost of living adjustment, he was involved in the discussions with the Police Department as well. And that was his area of expertise as well. If John, if you're available, comment on that.
Sure. Can you hear me? Thumbs up? Okay. So on the statute that's referenced, that's the Safe Schools levy, and we do that annually. There's a set rate per student, so we've been doing that, and it's not going to go up or go down because of this contract. It'll be the rate authorized in statute, and we'll continue to levy that. The reason we have a little bit more funding in there right now is there was some one-time state aid paid this school year, and it was based on the state of Minnesota having a surplus at the end of the last fiscal year. So if that had happened, then we got the, the lump sum payment. And we pretty much just put that money in the fund balance and let it sit there, knowing that this might be something we could use it for in the future. So that, that should buy us two to three years of paying for this officer. We'll be spending a little bit more than we're taking in, but we've got the fund balance now to draw on for a couple of years or more. As far as the negotiated rate of 2.5%, that is something that the city asked for. They believe that's what their cost of living adjustment is going to be. So since we're trying to share the cost of a police officer 50/50 with them, that's the percentage increase they asked us to pay starting January 1st.
Mr. Barlow has given the thumbs up, that he is satisfied with those answers. So thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Workman has a clarifying question.
Yes, I understand that the City Council also has to approve this. Am I right?
Yes.
Seeing, unless somebody else has other questions, seeing that meetings might be not as scheduled with the City Council, I would like to move this to action so they have plenty of time to approve it, and so we can have a police officer onboard when the school year starts.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
Second, Marvin.
Any discussion on moving this to action? Hearing none. Ms. Edgar, would you call the roll call vote on moving this to action?
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schlesner?
Aye.
Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
It is now an action item. I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the updated School Resource Officer Services Agreement for the term of July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020.
Move approval, Workman?
Second.
Second, Nathan?
Thank you. I'll have Ms. Edgar call the roll for approval.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Hello? Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schlesner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Motion passed. 7.01, resolution, non-renewing probationary teacher. This is an action item. We're getting there, folks. Now therefore, be it resolved. Can you hear me okay? Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 535 as follows. One, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 122A point 41 subdivision 2A, the School Board hereby declines to renew the annual teaching contract of the following probationary teacher effective at, at the end of the school year. Carolyn Dieterman. Two, as a result of this resolution, the district's employment relationship with the above-named teachers will be terminated effective June 30th, 2020. Three, the School Board has reviewed and hereby approves the written notice of non-reviewal for each of the affected teachers. The School Board Chair is directed to sign the written notices on behalf of the School Board. The reasons for non-reviewal are classified as private personnel data under the Minnesota Government Data Privacy, Data Practices Act, unless the non-renewal represents the final disposition, disposition of disciplinary action. Four, the superintendent or a designee is directed to serve the affected teachers with a copy of this resolution and the approved written notice for that teacher before July 1st. If possible, the notices should be hand-delivered. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll call vote?
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
I think I'm-
Ms. Mar-
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schlesner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item 8.01, future discussions. Board members, we already have a lengthy list of future discussions that we hope to have in our future meetings as they get back on track. Is there anything else anyone would like to share?
I have one item, and I think it will fit nicely with what the district is already planning, and that is doing a two-week assessment of district, distance learning. And my question really had to do with the percentage of students who are being served. The actual question is, are there significant numbers of students who are not being served through distant learning, suggesting they weren't able to either receive devices and/or internet connections? I don't know, so it's more a question of inquiry. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Barlow. From what I understand is you're asking for some follow-up feedback and information about our, how our distance learning is going. Superintendent, do you want to respond to having that discussion in the future or anything for now? Please go ahead.
Yes, we are in the process of, end of this week, I am going to get the attendance numbers at each site to get an, an idea of where we're at as far as the number of students that we're not connecting with at each building. And then we will work with individual buildings to develop a plan to connect with those students that they are connecting with. And then after the second week of distance learning, we are going to be putting out a survey for parents and students to get their feedback on how the first two weeks of distance learning went. And then we'll also put out a, a survey for staff on how we can better support them after the first two weeks of distance learning. And once we have those surveys done and, and all that information collected, I would be happy to share that with board members.
Thank you, Superintendent. And again, as usual, on behalf of the board, thanks for your work, Cabinet's work, all our staff, teachers, paraprofessionals. We know that this is historic times, and these are historic efforts being made. We certainly appreciate that and appreciate that you are going to be evaluating and seeing how we can help our teachers and our families better cope through this time. Director Workman?
Yes, I would like to know if it would be possible for the board to have an update. It, it doesn't have to be in great detail over how the distance learning is going, like Mike said, and if there's anything else that's pertinent to this whole situation that we are in. Mike, I really appreciated your comments on KROC yesterday morning. I thought that was really good. You gave me a lot of things to think about that I had not thought about before. So I'm, you know, perhaps it might be helpful, not only to the board, but also to the public, if at some point, some of those points that you made could be expanded on.
Thank you, Ms. Workman. Director Nathan? Director Nathan, you have the floor.
I wanted to add the policy governance study to the future discussions list so we don't lose track of it.
Thank you. Board members, community, we have a running list of things that the board would like to consider in the future. So now we have added policy governance. We also have some data needs, superintendent reflection and evaluation that we've been working on this year, needs, things need to be scheduled, resurrecting school board listening posts, forming a legislative committee of the board, a discussion about Freidel Middle School use, and school board compensation. So as you can see, we have some things that we had wanted to get to, but we're, I'm appreciative to Superintendent Cabinet for giving us a lighter agenda for the evening as we kind of navigate our new normal meeting options. Director Workman?
Yes, I would request that the chair actually send out those items that were just read to, in an email to us. I'm sure I have them somewhere, but it would be really easy if I could see them again all in one place.
They are for you, for your information and for the public's information. They are listed on the agenda item in board docs under future discussion. There's a bulleted list there. Also, from, another thing from Director Nathan, Superintendent, would you like to remind the public about the virtual feedback tomorrow on the new elementary school, the new Northwest Elementary School?
Yes, I can do that, because we are in a situation where we cannot get together physically to Wednesday from, I believe it starts at 6 o'clock, 6 to 7 PM. There's a link that people can connect to, and they can, we're going to be streaming that meeting here from the Edison Building. They can provide feedback and input on the new Northwest Elementary site and design. So that will be on Wednesday from 6 to 7 PM. And there'll be an opportunity for people to watch a presentation and then ask questions during the presentation, and then any follow-up questions they have after that.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you for allowing the community to keep, keep to our important work, our future work. Hope that folks will join us virtually and give us some feedback. Board members, anything else before we adjourn this evening? Hearing nothing, I will adjourn the meeting at 6:23 PM.